So again, this meeting was called to order. I'm not going to read the order again. It is on cable access. But this town council meeting on Monday, April 27th, 2027 PM, meeting held remotely. Again, a roll call vote is required for all votes taken under this order. A reminder, what I will do now is when we have an action item, I will go around to all the councillors or anybody that has something to say to make sure that I don't leave anybody out as I did in the previous meetings. Going to rise for pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
For which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councillor.
I thought we all... Yeah, well, I could hear you, so. Let me just go to my screen here. Thank you. Roll call, I'm secretary.
Councillor Adams.
Present.
Councillor Katrona.
Present.
Councillor Daniel.
Present.
Councillor Jovan.
Present.
Councillor Lazo.
Absent.
Councillor Manna.
Present.
Councillor Marquetti.
Present.
Councillor Nash.
Present.
And Councillor Steves.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. Item three, considering except the town council minutes of Monday, April 16th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
One moment. Second.
So I'll go councillor Nash and move that, and I'll go councillor Adams second in from what I can see. Any errors, corrections, or amendments? I will go first off, I see councillor Manna, councillor Mina.
I'd just like you to know that I'm going to abstain because I was not at the last meeting.
Thank you. Councillor Katrona, anything?
Also, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adams.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just on agenda number seventeen, on the last three or four lines, just to the... When I was speaking of my frustration, it was not towards the Veterans Service Director or the town. It was the frustration towards the veterans not providing proper information to the director. That's all.
Okay. Do you have that, Mary? What's that? Okay.
Yeah, I got it.
Councillor Nash, anything?
No corrections or amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Marquetti?
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Steves?
Just one minor thing. I think that the documents used list ought to include the text of the section 11, chapter 53, that we actually referred to, because it wasn't around.
Okay, yeah. I'll get that to you, Mary, the text that we used on that. That was something I had pulled up when we were talking about it. I pulled it up and shared it on my screen. So I'll get you that information for what that is. Thank you. Councillor Daniel, anything?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Roll call, accept those minutes as amended.
Councillor Adams?
Yes.
Councillor Katrona?
Yes.
Councillor Daniel?
Yes.
Councillor Jovan?
Yes.
Councillor Manna?
Abstained.
Councillor Marquetti?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor Steves?
Yes.
Thank you. Subcommittee reports, general government, councillor Steves?
We have not met recently, and we don't have anything scheduled.
Well, you did have a meeting for the budget, though, right?
Yeah, that was just before the last meeting.
Oh, good. Thank you. I've lost track of days, councillor.
Me too.
Department of Public Works, councillor Nash. Councillor Nash, if you could also indulge me. I know you sent me an email about those wipes, if you want to announce that. At the beginning of this, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be happy to, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. We haven't had any meetings short of the budget meeting, which was held on the 21st last week for the Thursday night meeting, so nothing new to report there. And also had a conversation with the DPW director today, and it just so happened that subsequent to that conversation, she messaged about backup and pump issues due to material that doesn't belong, most likely, in the sewer system. So please, at least councillors, if the general public isn't paying attention, spread the word about the wipes that really aren't designed or aren't appropriate for the sewer systems. They may be labeled as flushable, and they can make it down the toilet, but those along with other foreign debris, things that don't belong, are clogging pumps all over this country right now, and Southbridge is no exception. We've all heard it before, but the three Ps are what you should be putting down in the toilet and nothing else. So I'll leave it at that, councillor, our councillors, and Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the thought on that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Education and Human Services, councillor Lazo is absent. There is an EHS subcommittee meeting in health for this week that will address the budget concerns for Bay Path, as well as some of the other ancillary departments that operate under EHS. And the school budget is the following week. Development, councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just last meeting that we had was April 15th for the budget, but we had a town council meeting after that. Agenda number thirteen and fourteen on tonight's agenda would probably have gone to the subcommittee, but went straight to town council as requested.
Thank you. Protection of Persons and Property, councillor Mina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. No meetings since the budget meeting, and I totally forgot what date that was. And agenda item number ten does have to do with PPP, but it went straight to council due to all the issues with the pandemic. Is that...? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have a meeting scheduled for April 30th, tentative April 30th at 6:30.
Okay. Thank you. Just let me know, councillor Mina, if you do have that, so I can set it up in the invite through our town council the way I set up these meetings for go-to-meeting, okay?
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Special committee reports, curbside advisory committee, councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting on April 21st. The presentation is being fine-tuned, but the only thing that we have to add now, must have been added into the three options. We are working on the financial side of that as well when it comes to how to pay for giving those the options to the town council and the transfer station. So we can put those slides in there. Besides that, putting a memo together would be a little bit more detailed for the town councillors to review by, I say, presentation for their future decisions on curbside collection. Our next scheduled meeting is the 5th of May, and it's going to be done remotely. Then that's all I have for now.
Thank you, councillor. Tom, I have a search committee councillor, Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We haven't had a meeting in the last week, but councillors and various department heads should be receiving questionnaires either for personal interviews or for questionnaires regarding various components of this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to move on to the COVID-19 Public Health and Safety briefing update. Before we start that, I want to thank all the councillors for their patience during this. Now, we're starting on seven weeks of going through this COVID-19. Sadly, I'm sure Mr. Peltier will report this, as well as the incident commanders. Unfortunately, we've had four residents in the town of Southbridge pass away due to this pandemic. On behalf of the town council, I want to express our deepest condolences, thoughts, and prayers to those family members at this time, to those that are still in the hospital or suffering from the COVID-19. Just wish you best health to make sure that you get through this. And to the residents of Southbridge, thank you for your patience. We see not a lot of people out on the streets and really taking the state at home at heart. It's going to continue. I don't think the governor's going to release the stay-at-home on May 4th, but we'll see how that goes. But thank you for all that. I can't say enough my appreciation to everybody that is working in the Emergency Operations Center, the leadership of the two chiefs. We're very fortunate to have the department heads and the leadership that we have. And also thank you really again to councillor Adams for really putting together the information for our website. Every day, he is working on that information, seeking out and making sure that we have accurate and timely information for the public, and I think, and I appreciate that, and especially with the Facebook Live as well. But I'm sure the chief will say some words on that. So with that, just a brief update, Mr. Peltier, if you could.
Thank you, and a brief update's all I have today. We are currently sitting at forty-nine cases. We have resolved twenty of them, unfortunately. As councillor Jovan has mentioned, four of them were resolved through passing. Never a good thing to report, never happy about that. The... We have put the nurses on, the extra two nurses that the council allowed me funding for. And Alicia in my office has taken lead on the case follow-ups. We still have a public health nurse involved. She has become more of an advisory role. Our goal was to take some pressure off her. As you may know, she covers somewhere between fourteen and twenty-two towns. So we have so far, I believe at the last one I reported, that the state was taking over cases that the towns can't get to. We obviously want to hold on to our cases. They are citizens. So we have successfully, with these new resources, managed to keep up with the caseload, and we're addressing them, following contacts, and closing them as we are capable. We've been given $17,500, I believe, after this afternoon's commitments. We're pretty much going to be wiping that out. I am going to be sending out emails this afternoon to all of the state DPHC, CMRPC, everybody else to see if there's any other funding out there, and hopefully replenish that monies a little bit. Working with the fire department and police department and Mike Julian from my department, we got the tent up and running this morning. I speculated that there were... The last I heard, there were three people using the tent. I stopped in today. This is for the homeless tent down at 141 Main Street. I stopped in today, and it is at full capacity. They have eleven people using the facility, plus the three that are allowed inside the building. So at 141 Main Street, we have fourteen total people, plus the staff. The fire department brought to my attention today that the church on Main Street, the Notre Dame Church, is using the rectory for a positive COVID for some of their priests in the region. We have five priests who are living there right now with positive COVID ID. The building is accessory to the church, but it is primarily its rectory. It's a residence. So the use is perfectly appropriate. I've sent the information to Shane and to Paul today with no comments back. So I think we're pretty much comfortable that using it as a residence, whether it be for a COVID shelter or a... Just a residence, is a perfectly fine use. And we are also working with the Center of Hope to see what we can do to help them get their clients through this. Obviously, their client is very... Their clients are very reliant upon families. And we are trying to create a venue where they can be protected, but still not be spreading these families. So working closely with the Center of Hope for a third shelter. Beyond that, I think I've done nothing.
Does anybody have any questions for Andy? Let's see. I don't see anybody. Gus, do you have any? Councillor Steves, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to incident commander and public information officer, Chief Woodson.
Good evening, everybody. So just relatively quickly on as far as the Emergency Operations Center. I mentioned it this morning on our weekly meeting that we're prepared for the absolute worst-case scenario, because you have to be, and if we weren't, we'd be negligent in our duties and our responsibilities to the citizens. So we are prepared. Fortunately, we're holding pretty steady over there. So far, so good. We're, you know, prepping for the, again, worst-case scenario for the surge, for issues with police officers being sick and firefighters, and...
I want to kiss.
So far, so good on that. We're kind of in a, in the police academy, call it a hurry-up-and-wait mode. You know, everybody's just kind of waiting to see what happens. We're adequately staffed. Last weekend, we had several more police officers exposed that had contact with a COVID-positive citizen. All the police officers were tested. All are negative. But it's, you know, it's a little bit tricky monitoring them in between and their duties and having to wear masks and gloves and, and, you know, eye protection and things like that, so we don't infect anybody else. Because all of our guys and girls, even though they're having contact with positive people, they still got to come into work every day. So everybody's doing well. We're all hanging in there, unfortunately, or I guess it could be a good thing. That's all I really have about the EOC right now. We're holding steady and waiting for things to get worse. We expect them to get worse. And if they don't, we're prepared, and if they do, we're prepared.
Chairman of the Union, you got it?
Yeah, I got it. Councillor Adams gave me a little nod, so I appreciate that. Chief Norman will be last here. He shouldn't have much to say, because as he stated earlier today, because he goes last, we pretty much have covered everything. So Chief Norman?
I can actually say we did not really cover everything. Just a notice to the citizens that are watching today, and councillors, obviously, you can push this message forward, that a citizen cannot ask the public safety and/or the council for PPE protection. Right now, our current PPE contacts are generally, are fully for volunteers. At this point, this is where we keep our, like the chief Woodson had said, we need to keep this stuff ready for us. We've had several people contact us in regards to handing out PPE, but that's not going to be feasible at this current time. I will also say, just from the EOC aspect, so the citizens also know that we are on duty, and we need calls for conference call.
Lost him.
I think we lost him. If you're going in and out, so. All right. Chief, I don't know if you can hear me, chief, but we can't hear you, so.
We're on a daily call list, so moving...
All right.
For everybody.
No. All right. I'm going to mute the chief.
To know.
Chief, I've muted you because we can't hear you.
All right. I'm done.
Okay, all set. All right. I'm supposed to put up any... Yeah, well, barely.
All right. End of my report.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, councillor Katrona.
Thank you. I'm being told that residents aren't able to hear this at home?
Yeah, I've sent a message to the cable access. They're doing the best they can, so I can't do anything about it. We'll post this back up when it becomes available. We'll post it to the website, but councillor Adams?
Mr. Chair, just to answer the councillors, I wanted to turn up my volume. I'm muted here. Turn up the volume. You can barely... You could hear it, but you have to turn your volume all the way up. There's just something wrong with it.
Yeah. I do know they put in a new system today, and they had tested it and worked earlier today, so I'm not sure what the issue is. But it's the best we can do when it becomes remote participation, so. Any questions for Chief Woodson or Chief Norman? Okay, see, Gus, do you have any? Councillor Steves, do you have any questions?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Chairman's announcements. Couple things. We will be finishing up budget hearings in the next two weeks. Thank you for those that have participated in those budget hearings. A lot of dialogue. And I think we're going to have some very difficult decisions to make within the next two months once we see what our revenue projections are for next fiscal year. I had a conversation earlier today with the town clerk, Matty Bonadeas, who's looking into some options for the elections. She is looking to see if we're going to either reduce hours, have split hours, or do something along the lines. If anybody has any information that they would like to maybe get in touch with, Matty, and touch base with her about some of your thoughts about the elections coming up, so that we can vet them through legal, to make sure that we do everything appropriate. She will ask some questions about the differences in elections, so a lot of work on that. And more to come, because she has to get the warrant printed right before the election. Earlier tonight, we had talked about subcommittee meetings, some information that's coming forward. We originally had pretty much agreed that we would not hold subcommittee meetings except for the... Well, we had budget issues, I guess, with the remote participation. If you wish to have things go through the subcommittee, we're trying to eliminate those meetings due to the complexities of remote participation and try and get these meetings set up. If councillors, please send me emails if you wish to have regular subcommittee meetings back on the agendas to vet that information. Please let me know what your preference is, so that we can go forward in the next... This looks like we will not come out of no public participation-type things until probably end of May, if we see what the numbers are doing in the state. So please email me what you... Or contact me by phone, subcommittee chairs, to discuss that, how you wish to move forward with your individual subcommittees. Because it's the ability to get everybody into one room and have a subcommittee to talk about the issues, and I get it. And especially for public access, the thought process was to try to get everything done at council level at this point, but we can talk about that. We have a regular meeting scheduled for next week as well. We can discuss that further next week. So give me your thoughts on that. And that is all I have for tonight. Oh, one more thing. In regards to Memorial Day activities, I'm going to do this.
There... So please bear with me. We did a lot of talking last few weeks, taking a look at different towns and throughout, not only the state of Massachusetts, but throughout the United States. And one trend we found most consistently was the fact that they canceled Memorial Day Parade. So what we, with talking to the Veterans Director, Service Director, myself, the town manager, and Mike Trumbly and the Veterans Council themselves, we've decided to cancel the parade itself, which would have been held on the 25th of May. What we have decided is to continue to honor those that perished while serving in our country. And by doing so, we will continue to put the flags out at the cemetery as scheduled. We will also pre-place all wreaths out there throughout the monuments, throughout the town. And at nine o'clock on that May 25th, we will have a short ceremony that will consist of a few speeches. We will also recognize those Southbridge residents who passed away in these last twelve months. Right now, I believe it's thirty-nine. And ring the bell and lay the poppies. We will also have a firing detail. And we've been playing, obviously, the National Anthem, taps, and service branch hymns. This will take place at the honor roll. One thing that I put in here in the letter, which I'll be posting to social media, which will also go on cable access, which will also go to the local papers. The ceremony will be taped by the town's Cable Access Department and streamed live through Facebook. Since we are taping and streaming live, or live-streaming this event, we ask that the public not to congregate this day as to follow current state and local guidelines prohibited, prohibiting most gatherings of over ten people. We completely understand that these guidelines are just that, guidelines. We also understand that by May 25th, those guidelines may change a bit, or they may stay the same. So what I will do, the best, best that I can do is constantly let the town councillors know, let the town manager know, let the public know of any changes that may take place between now and then. I'll be working with the Veterans Service Director this week, if not early next week, to set up a schedule for laying of the flags at the cemeteries and with other veterans to lay the wreaths, and working with cable access again to maybe do some screenshots. So at the end of the ceremony itself, they can put something together, and we can share through social media through local cable access. And if anybody has any questions, they can contact me, text me, whatever it may be. But with the heavy heart, we had to make that decision out of a bunch of safety caution, but at the same time, we also wanted to recognize those, make sure that they are recognized for their service to our great country. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Jack, turn your mute off.
Thank you, councillor Adams. Thank you, councillor Nash. So with that, that's all I have, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and like you, I want to express my sympathies to the families and friends that left, to the loved ones from this virus, and to all those that are out there sick and their families. Our prayers are with all of you. It's a difficult time, and we know it very, very well. As you said, Mr. Chairman, we are trying to finalize the budget, and four of the five subcommittees have made their recommendations. The last of the subcommittees making recommendations is Health and Education, which I believe they're going to be doing it Wednesday night. The finance director and I spent today going through all those remaining budgets, the health budgets in particular with all the department heads. As you know, we've had to do a second round to try to reduce spending, trying to bring everything back to last year's level. So we accomplished that. You may have gotten the revised budgets. They know that our finance director was working on them today to give you revised budgets as early as possible, so you can prepare for Wednesday night. Most of these departments are small. The big budgets, we still have a lot to talk about, is really going to be Bay Path and Southbridge Public School System are really the big numbers we're going to talk about in the Education Committee. So we are moving forward in a positive way. We're trying to be as conservative as we possibly, possibly can be understanding, you know, the revenue situation that's going on. We'll continue to make every effort to put in protections for town employees, to see to it that we protect them from this virus. We are very fortunate that so far we haven't anybody that's been COVID-positive in any of our departments at this point. So kudos to all those town employees that are still working hard to provide services to the town. I greatly appreciate all the work they're doing. I know you do as well. And tremendous amounts of work are being done in spite of the craziness that's kind of surrounding them. But I think things are going well. I'm still kind of watching in the emails and discussing things with area town managers to make sure we're in the same path as they are. We're all kind of doing things as a group. We have ordered today fifteen plexiglass shields for a town hall building and for the elections. Some of that money will come from the money that Andy has, the health agent has within his department, and some will come from the $10,000 that you've set aside for that purpose. The way it works is the elections officer, Matty, needed fifteen for the elections. We're going to use those same ones for town hall, so they will use them for those couple of days. But for the most part, they will be used at town hall on a permanent basis, except for Election Day. So we feel pretty good about that. Was working with the health department today to make sure that that was in order. We had the right sizes for all the different places in town hall. Pretty easy to understand where they would be, and the health department, there'll be one in the assessor's office and the collector's office. We're probably going to build a larger one there. The town clerk's office, the town manager's office. We're really giving a lot of consideration to what happens and what we need to do to prepare to reopen. We hope that the fourth is the day, but I like the chairman skeptical that the fourth is going to be the day. I think it's going to be possible longer. But we need to be prepared to make sure our employees are safe once we get back to somewhat normal operations. So things are going well, and we're trying to consider all the different factors, and I feel like we're doing well. But every day's a new test, so to speak, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And I feel like we're doing well, but every day is a new test, so to speak. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You're muted, Jack.
Thank you. Any questions to the Town Manager from anybody that I can see? Counselor Steve's, any questions?
Nope, thanks.
Okay, I'll go to Counselor Catrona and then Counselor Marketti. Counselor Catrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the Town Manager. At our last meeting, the Town Manager had mentioned that there were employees home, but still on the payroll. Is that still the case?
The employees that are working from home, yes. But there's not employees at home not working and not getting paid, getting paid. That's not the case. So everybody that's working from home is still working remotely, but they're still on payroll and still working. We had three people that took layoffs at the library and one person decided to retire. The crossing guards have all been laid off and the pages of the library are laid off, but other than that, everybody's still working.
Thank you.
Counselor Marketti?
Yeah. I don't have any problem with the spending the money on the plastic shields. They're absolutely necessary and I absolutely have no problem with it. I just want to remind the Town Manager that the last meeting, he said he would send out an email every time he would be using that account. Just wanted to remind him of that. That's all. Thank you.
And thank you, Counselor Marketti. We planned to do just that. We've done nothing but order them yet, so we haven't spent a dime yet. But I, you know, I'm telling you tonight because I wanted to give you a heads up that that's coming. But we will, our Finance Director, as we spend any money from that $10,000, is going to send a continuous report as we do that to councilors. I think she talked to the chairman or emailed the chairman about that this afternoon.
Yep. Thank you. Presentations, there is no presentations for starting in this evening. Citizens Forum, there is no Citizens Forum at now because governors ordered no public participation for this meeting. We will continue to explore the possibility of doing something remotely. And we'll see about trying to get that done, hopefully for the next meeting if we can possibly do that. I know we have a public hearing coming up for Capitol Plan Public Hearing. I know the school has a public hearing. We'll see how that works and see how they have that capability so that we can do that. Item 10. Vote to confirm the appointment of Nicholas Chatsopoulos. Hopefully I said Nick's name correctly. As a full-time police officer for the town of Southridge upon successful completion of all medical and physical testing as required by the Human Resources Civil Service, effective date to start on the date of the next available academy. Can I have a motion?
I move.
All right. So I have Counselor Manna moved it. Counselor Daniel seconded it. Guess I'll go to the Town Manager first and then the Chief.
I'm going to be brief. Did you know, whenever we hire officers, the chief goes through a long process. In the end, we do interviews with myself, the chief, the deputy chief and Kim Farren. This is another candidate that was highly recommended in our list of candidates. I believe we had one candidate that kind of dropped out and the chief recommended this one to come forward. But has been interviewed through all the processes and I think will be a fine candidate for the town. With that, I'll turn it over to the police chief.
Chief Woodson?
Good through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you again for having me here tonight. So the candidate is also on this remote meeting. I assured him that he wouldn't have to talk, but if you guys have any questions, he is available. He's probably, he's the stranger, the sub calling, but that's coming on there. This is a budgeted position and due to the pandemic, it's, this candidate will likely not start an academy till the fall at the earliest. Prior to the public health emergency, there were several academies scheduled for late August and early September. Those are probably, if I was guessing, man, I would say they're going to be pushed to at least, you know, Thanksgiving or Christmas, but we'll have to wait and see. The problem is, the reason why I'm here tonight is, is going to be several numerous police departments start to come. They're going to be behind in training. They're going to be looking to get recruits into academies. So I basically want to have Nick up on deck and ready to go when that does happen. I just want him to be prepared. And again, the Town Manager kind of touched on it earlier. This candidate, this position's only available now because two days before the start of the February 24th Police Academy, I had a candidate come into my office and resign. So that's the only reason why this position's available. So it's the next man up, as the Patriots say. This is our next candidate on the civil service list. There's no reason to bypass this candidate. Per civil service law, you need to have some reason to go over a candidate to get the candidates below him or her that prevents any nepotism or favoritism or anything like that. That's the purpose of civil service. Nick, I won't even try the last name, is a U.S. Army veteran. During his time with the Army, he had an impeccable service record. He's promoted to platoon sergeant. He had supervised 14 soldiers under his command. Currently is still a reserve and he works at a local owned business. I left out that part. His family, Nick went to high school in Spencer, but his family has owned and operated a business in our community for 30 plus years. Nick was offered the opportunity to, from what I know and going through the background process and what I know of the ownership of that business, he was provided a chance to help and kind of take over eventually and he wants to go into law enforcement. So he's got to go in another direction. Throughout the entire background process for Nick, which was done a couple of months ago and then refreshed again over the last couple of weeks. Impeccable background, all of his previous employers and everybody in the military, all of a sudden they hire him again. They didn't want to see him leave when he left and that he'd make a great asset to my department. So with all that said, I will say that I highly recommend him for the position of at least police recruit for now. And until the next available academy, he'll be in a holding pattern.
Thank you. Chief, could you just, I don't have any problems with this candidate and I know earlier today in the Emergency Operations Center, Chief Deputy Chief Dinghy had given us an update as to the status of the three recruits and I know the reason for this appointment is one of the recruits that we had previously appointed didn't attend. Chief Dinghy had given us an update as to the status of the current academy class. And could you just update the other members of the council so that they have the knowledge of this as to some of the challenges that we have right now with that academy being put on hold? And how that does affect the timeline for future recruits?
Yeah, absolutely. The, you know, again, things that I, when I don't think I can be surprised, I am. And this pandemic has certainly done a lot of that to me. We had four recruits scheduled to start February 24th. Like I had said, three started. And then probably two weeks ago, we got notification from the state that all police training, more than 500 recruits throughout the Commonwealth were being put on hold. So they sent everybody home from the academy. We took our three police recruits. One of them was an auxiliary prior to their employment as a full-time police officer. So we put them back out in the street to work. The other two candidates had no training with us, so we put them on the desk answering phones for us during the pandemic. We were notified late last night and then again earlier this morning, we talked about it at the EOC that those three police recruits now, the original date was they were shelved until May 1st. We were told today, June 1st. But what they're doing starting this Friday is they're going to be doing remote training. And they're going to be doing that Monday through Friday, six, seven, eight hours a day. And I don't know how you're going to accomplish police recruit training over the internet and doing a remote training. I don't know how it's going to be done. But the state's telling me that's what they're doing and that's what they're doing statewide. But that's going to be a problem because our original graduation date, what I was hoping was July, mid to late July, we were getting three new police officers on the street. That's not the case now because they've been away from the academy for a couple of weeks. Now they're transitioning to remote training. We're being told by academy staff and by the Chairman of the Municipal Police Training Committee that this will probably be delaying their graduation dates, which is obvious. I don't know when that's going to be. So now here we are, we're behind again. We were behind when we sent these four original candidates and we ended up with three. And then we were behind knowing that they were graduating in July. Now they're not graduating in July. So we just seem to always be playing catch up and it's no one's fault. I mean, we're in unprecedented times as we've all heard people say a million times. So that's why I want to get this candidate up early. It might seem a little bit premature, but at least he will be ready to go with your blessing. And it'll be signed off, medical paperwork done, psych exam, everything will be done. All I'll have to do is submit his paperwork and we'll get him into the next class.
And Chief, just a final question for me. In order to get a candidate into a class, you have to have him appointed, correct? And that's why we need to do this so that you can secure that slot, correct?
Yes, and I apologize. I left out the most important part. Without a letter of appointment from the Town Manager being voted on by the elected body, we cannot secure any slots. They will not reserve anything. I need that letter. So rather again, than try to do this several months from now and be on a timeline, I'll have that appointed letter, which I can get to him hopefully tomorrow if it's voted yes. And it will just be, it'll say, we'll not start until the next available academy.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Counselor Steve, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Counselor Manna?
I just want to thank Nicholas for his service.
Thank you. Any other questions from the councils that I can see?
Nope.
See enough. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for bringing that candidate forward. I'm glad that we're doing this proactively so that we can secure that position and hold that slot because we're in the position we are right now because we didn't have the ability to send it people to the academy because it was such delayed. So I appreciate that we're doing this proactively at this time. See enough further questions. I'll go, we'll call Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
All right. To Nicholas, if you're listening, congratulations on your appointment. We look forward to working with you. Hopefully in the near future, we can have you before the council so that we can formally recognize you as we do all people that we appoint. And we'll make sure we arrange with the chief, but congratulations and we look forward to your training. So thank you for that. Thank you, Chief. Do you have anything further?
No, thank you very much to the council, just for your continued support. We really appreciate it. The town appreciates it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Get item 11. Vote to adopt Section 11 of Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, an act to address challenges faced by the municipalities and state authorities resulting from COVID-19. The local option to waive interest and other penalty for late payment of any excise, tax betterment, assessment or apportionment thereof, water rate or annual school use or other charge added to a tax for any payments with a due date on or after March 10th, 2020, where payment is made after its respective due date, but on but on or before June 30th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
I got a motion by Counselor Daniel and a second by Counselor Manna. I guess I'll go to Town Manager first. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Mr. Town Manager, could you unmute yourself, please?
Sorry about that. First, I wanted to thank the Town Council for holding this item. We could have did this on the fly at the last meeting. But I wanted to take a little bit of time for myself, the Finance Director and the Treasurer Collector to review this. I know it's important that Town Council to protect the residents from these interests or late fees. We all know that people are struggling, struggling right now. A lot of people losing their job. I appreciate the concern that the Town Council has to protect those residents. We believe that the language is correct and the language is in now a good place to move forward. So I thank you for that and we'll turn it over to the Treasurer Collector, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Melissa?
Hi. So I don't really have anything further. I just, you know, we had, we had agreed to bring this back this, this time. We have had several requests from the public wondering whether or not we're going to waive fees going forward.
Okay. Questions? I guess one question that I have, Melissa. So this would mean any tax bills, the tax bills will do May 1st, is still due on May 1st. If people pay it late, there's no fees or demands or anything like that. Is that correct?
Yes, up until June 30th. So anything after June 30th, all penalties and interest would apply back to the due date.
Okay. So originally we had talked about extending the date to June 1st. So in lieu of that, those people that have the ability to pay it by May 1st, those people that take escrow and all that will still be responsible for May 1st. But we won't seek any fees, demands on anything up until June 30th. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to anyone that may know. What if the state of emergency is extended beyond that date? It's just a what-if scenario. Will they have to come back to council?
Yes. So the language, the language that was presented to the council was language from the Department of Revenue at the state of Massachusetts and it's very specific on the dates. So if, if it was to extend any further, I believe that the Department of Revenue would give us another option at that time. I, I feel like, you know, it's my opinion that they wouldn't extend it past June 30th for our fiscal years and the issues that that presents to us as a municipality in collecting stuff with, collecting taxes within the fiscal year.
Okay.
Thank you.
You all set? Counselor Manna? Yep. Counselor Steve, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have one quick one. Through you to Melissa. If, what, I would like to give you to explain a little bit the difference, why, why you think we ought to leave it for May 1st and not transfer it over to June 1st?
No, so I really have no opinion on which one. I believe that at the last meeting I presented multiple options. One was to accept both things. One was to accept this option and one was to accept only the June 1st option. I, it was my impression from the people that were here that that this is what the council was most comfortable with. The other thing is that if someone chose not to pay the bill until, let's say, next September, just because that's their personal situation, we would be able to collect interest back to the actual due date.
From your experience, do you have any rough idea of how often bills end up going that late?
The town of Southridge, we have quite a few.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. So just to follow up on on something that Melissa said, to Melissa. So if, so this is extended to June 30th with no interest and no penalties. But if they are late past June 30th, then you're going to go all the way back retroactive to May 1st? Like that 0% interest rate that you get, you know, those special promotions? And then you're going to charge them or you're going to go back from the date that the that the, the adoption, the terminology? Are you going to go like, say the extensions till June 30th and somebody doesn't pay until like September 1st or something or August 1st? You're going to go all the way back to May for the interest charges or you're going to go back to July 1st?
We're going to go all the way back to May because we're not changing the due date. We're saying for a temporary period, that we're waiving interest. If you wanted to move the date of the of where the interest goes back to, that's the other option to move the due date to June 1st. But we are not allowed to move the due date any later than June 1st. And that was also from the DOR guidance that we got when, when the state of emergency came out, they were trying to offer some kind of relief to taxpayers.
Right. And so, and I, I understand that. I'm just a little bit baffled why you would, because we're, we're relieving them of any interest and penalties through June 30th. So why not start fresh? I mean, if somebody can't pay their bill until September 1st, then why not, why, why are we going to do what the credit card companies do? And, and make, and make them, I mean, we're, we're telling them, no, you have until June 30th. And I totally get that. But if they can't pay, I mean, there's going to be some people that aren't going to be going back to work, you know? They probably, some people are going to permanently lose their jobs, you know? So I'm just confused as to why we're going to go all the way back to May 1st and not start on July 1st with the interest. I mean, that doesn't, I mean, that does, doesn't make any sense to me. If we're waiving it until June 30th, but somebody can't pay until September 1st, now we're going to make them pay all that money? After giving them the relief because they, they were out of work and they still could be out of work? That doesn't make sense to me. I, I, I hope you understand what I'm trying to say.
No, no, I do. I do understand. No, no, I do, I do understand what you're trying to say. And it's really, honestly, it's the way taxes are calculated. They're calculated from the due date. So by waiving interest, we're saying there is a penalty, but we as the Town of Southbridge are going to waive that penalty. We're not going, we're not making, we're not making it zero. It remains 14, but we're waiving it. And that waiver that you, the council is, is authorizing is greater than the tax collector's ability to waive taxes. So I couldn't do it without this legislation or, or your authority. And then the, the second thing is, it's, it's, it's a wave of the penalty, not a change of the due date and not a change of the interest rate.
As long as somebody can pay it by, we got it till, on, on June 30th, right? Is that what you're saying? Then they're not going to be charged that. But if they can't pay it until July 1st, then you're going to go retroactive. And they're going to have to pay from May 1st through June 30th. I mean, it says it right here, you're waiving. So you have the ability to waive the interest and the penalties for that, for our town. I, I just, I, I don't know. It just, it sounds to me like, okay, here we have, we're, we're going to waive the interest and we're going to waive the penalty because you may be out of work and maybe struggling financially up until June 30th. And I get that. I get that, right? But after June 30th, then we have to start charging you unless the DOR or whoever says, no, we don't. We have another, if you want to adopt this, we're going to extend it or whatever they do. So up until June 30th, if you can't pay, I mean, if you can pay, then fine. You don't have to pay any interest or any penalty. But if you pay on July 1st, we're going retroactive all the way back to, to, to May. And it just doesn't sound, it doesn't sit right with me. That's all. It, it, it's, it's one of those like 0% interest for six months. And then once you don't make that pay, you miss a payment and you have like one payment left and you're late on it or something, they go retroactive. And now you're paying like $500 or $600 in penalties. I'm not saying that, that, that's what's going to happen, but you're paying that penalty. We're waiving something, but if they're a day late, then we're not waiving it. It just doesn't sit right with me.
Right. I appreciate that, but I believe that's, I believe that's our option.
I, I can't support it like that then. I mean, I would like to support waiving it, but if we're going to waive it, then we need to waive it and then start the interest on July 1st and, and penalties. Not go all the way back to May 1st.
All right. Counsel Adams?
Hey, Mr. Chair, just through you, real quick to Melissa, is there anything in writing that says that? I mean, the DOR took the time to write this up. They didn't take the time to write up it'd be retroactive come July 1st if you paid July 1st or after.
So the, the rule that I'm following is strictly tax collection. Interest on real estate taxes is 14% from the due date. This, this before you is an exception.
Okay. So, so there's nothing really in writing that says that, that though they waived it, this is an exception? There's nothing, but what I, and I understand what Counsel Manna is trying to get at. They took the time to write this portion up, but they didn't take the time to write in there that specifically within this exception, that if you surpass that date, then you automatically have to back pay.
No, they, they gave an option to change the due date.
Right. Okay.
But you can't change the due date to June 30th. You can only change the due date to June 1st.
Okay, thank you.
The due date may be no later than June 1st.
Okay, thank you.
You have to adopt both of those things. But then, like, again, in the example that Counsel Manna is discussing, if you change the due date to June 1st and someone paid on September 1st, the interest would go back to June 1st, the due date.
Okay, all set. Hey, Counsel Steves, do you have any other questions?
I do, actually. Thank you. One is that, what, through you to Melissa, what happens, first of all, if somebody only pays part of it before the due date? And then carries the rest over, say, to August or whatever? Would they be forced, would they be paying interest on, on the entire period or just the section that wasn't paid?
So any tax bill paid past the due date, so if, so if I had a $100 tax bill and I paid $250 of it sometime, you know, before the due date or before the June 30th, and then my interest is calculated on the principal past due back to the due date.
That's what I thought. Okay. And the other question is that, I said, that I think one of the things we all ought to be considering is the fact that a lot of people in town probably haven't received their federal payments yet. And my, pushing the, the due date up to June 1st might give some more people time to receive some of these. That might help with tax collections. It might not. Who knows? But, so, and I understand what Counsel Manna was saying a little while ago. I would, I know, I, I, I understand your argument, Melissa, and what you were saying about what the DOR is saying. Is there anything in there specifically stating that towns do not have the authority to waive the the fees, the fees and penalty, the penalties and interest, basically permanently just have them pay the taxes and that yet?
Yes, there is legislation. And I think it's mashed it a lot like 59 or 60 yet. I don't know it off the top of my head, but all tax collectors are to collect the taxes and/or interest and can waive no more than $15. And as soon as the interest and penalties goes beyond the amount of $15, they can't waive any.
Oh, okay.
And so this allow, an amount greater than $15 because it allows a time period. So based on the size of your tax bill.
Right. Okay, I get that. So if we were to push it up to June 1st, we would still be able to waive the taxes and fees till the end of the, end of the fiscal year?
You, you would have to do two votes.
Okay.
Counsel Marquetti?
Oh, yes, I was reading over this document here provided by the state. And am I, am I correct that this act allows deficit spending for, in the next three years?
That's a different portion of the, that's a different portion of the law.
Yeah, it's different from, from, from my section. Karen could speak more to that. And I believe it allows you to carry your your deficit and spread it out over three years, which is, which if we had enough reserves would not be practical in my opinion, but, but Karen could speak more to that than I, than I.
Okay. And I don't have any problem supporting whatever Counsel Manna, if she wants to make a motion, I, I would be happy to support that. What, if she wants to move it to June 1st, that's, I would support that. Thank you.
Counsel Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I, I don't support any of this, just because it's very misleading to the public. It, it makes it look like, well, we're going to waive your penalties and taxes, but guess what? If you can't pay it by July 1st, we're going retroactive and you still have to pay it. So it just, I, I don't support any of this. It just doesn't seem, it seems very, I don't know, it seems like something's missing from it. For me, it does. And I, I just, yeah, I'm not going to support it at all because it, it is very misleading for the community.
Okay. Karen, did you have something, Karen?
Yes, if I could, Mr. Chair. I just, I just want to make sure that Counsel Manna understands that if this waiver isn't passed, then no fees are going to be waived. And all fees will become due of anyone that pays late after May 1st.
So if I may, yes, I do understand that. Karen, I do, I do totally understand that. And no matter when they pay and if they pay late, it, it's just, it's very, very misleading. And I think the state is missed out on something because they're giving money left and right and they're, 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 they're letting they're letting things go and they're getting money from the federal government and there's a lot of confusion on it. And I, I think there's something just missing in here because just to offer a waiver and then all of a sudden you're one day late and now you're charged that back interest and back penalties? I mean, how is that helping anyone who's in a financial bind due to the pandemic? To me, that's not helping anyone at all. So I, I just like, I, I can't support it. It is very misleading.
Counsel Adams, to you, sir.
Hey, Mr. Chair. The only reason why I'm voting yes for this specific motion is because it will actually give them 60 days and a bereavement of paying, paying any, you know, late, especially with some of the situations they're in now. So, you know, hopefully everybody will be able to pay up by, you know, June 29th and June 30th. So it's just to me, it makes sense to, to give, give the residents the best break we could possibly can as counselors of this community. But with an understanding that, you know, after July 1st, it's, it's backdated. But at least it gives them about 60 days, a little bit more than 60 days to to come up with the, the proper funds to pay for their taxes or pay their taxes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Daniel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with, with Counsel Manna about, about the, the fact that it seems like the state has missed the boat a little bit here. But however, the, the state has at least given us half a loaf. And therefore, I'm supportive of the measure this evening so that we can at least give some relief to the citizens of Southbridge. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Counsel Steves, do you have anything further?
No, not at the moment. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Nash, do you have anything to add? You good, Counsel Nash?
Thank you. I'm sorry. Couldn't get unmuted. I appreciate the, the note over here, Mr. Chairman. As I stated last week, I, I think this is a better avenue to follow despite the real relief, its potential relief. And it is the best thing that we can offer to the residents that aren't able to meet the May 1st due date for property taxes and water and sewer rates that are coming due. So I, I still support it as I did on Thursday. I understand the ramifications. I understand that it doesn't suit everybody, but it does suit some. And that's the best we can offer tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Catron, did you have anything else?
Almost, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm in agreement. I, I understand Counsel Manna's point. It's a point well taken. There's no real good options. You know, we understand everybody's struggling. This was one option that we have to give some relief to our residents. And hope that we also get some revenues in as well. I mean, it's a balancing act because everything that we do is contingent on tax revenue as well. So while I understand the waiver part back, we have tax regulations and all that unless the state comes back to permanent revenue or anything like that comes forward with a, a change that we can address at a later date, then I'll happily you know, take the look back and adapt. It's the best option that we presented after much discussion last week as well. Counsel Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I appreciate that. And, you know, and, and I totally understand. Is something going to go out to the residents and let them know? Is there going to be a detailed letter letting them know that this isn't, this, this will only, you know, this will only stop the interest and penalties as long as you pay by, you know, June 30th, you know? And after Ju, June 30th, that the taxes and the penalties will be due if you do not pay. I mean, is there a detailed letter that's going to go out to explain it to them? Because, again, it's very misleading.
So
Oh, go ahead, Melissa.
So I wasn't going to do a mailing to, to the 5,600 parcels that we have here in town, but I was going to post it on the, on the website, just that there was a waiver of the penalties if paid on or before June 30th, is the way that Karen and I discussed it. And that anything after that would go back to the due date. So I, I also want to remind Counsel Manna and the rest of the council that we are not currently assessing penalties. Normally, like the motor vehicle bill would have been a demand already. We aren't doing that. We would normally do a demand for the real estate prior to the end of the fiscal year. That's the normal timing. We are not going to do that. So those penalties, which are the larger part, most often, of the of the interest and penalties are, are not being sent at the time.
Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Melissa. Correct me if I'm wrong, but don't you have to make a mailing based upon Section E on pages five and six in the background material?
Exactly.
Exactly.
I, I guess I missed that. So if I have to make mailing, I guess I will have to do that this week.
Yep, there's a mailing and also there's, there's a sample notice in the back page.
I'll open this up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is that what you had? Counsel Steves?
Um, yeah, thank you. Melissa, a quick question. Have you seen anything from the state indicating that they might be leaning toward doing, allowing these kinds of delayed payments going forward for the, in this year? And it's not likely that this system, this problem is going to end in June, more likely than not.
Yeah, I, I, I haven't seen anything from them to that effect. And, and honestly, what I've told the, the taxpayers who have contacted me regarding this was that, you know, I don't know what's going to happen in August. I, I assume that those bills will be due on time because the, the, the problem becomes for us to operate as a municipality, we, we depend on these collections.
I'm sorry, I missed half of it.
Keep kicking the can down the road. I don't know how long we can sustain that.
Right. Yeah, I don't need
Okay. Any further questions?
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Go ahead, Karen.
Karen, there was a bulletin 2020-03 that came out. I didn't bring it home with me. I just have the 02. And I believe that it addressed the mailing. I don't think the mailing has to go out. I think we can use the website and other sources. That was going through my association. A lot of people didn't have time to get the mailing out. So Melissa, let's just check that out tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, as long as you follow whatever procedure there is.
Yeah.
Counsel Manna?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm sorry because, you know, I, I wasn't at the last meeting and I guess all these questions that came up then too. So I do apologize. So even though, I mean, if you don't have to do the mailing, right, and you get it up on the website and, you know, you're like, you're crunched to do the mailing, shouldn't we just send something out afterwards or something if, if we can't get it out right now, if it's not mandatory? Just so residents know. Because, once again, not everybody has computers, not everybody's going to go on the town website. You know, I mean, if you've got 5,000 residents, not all those 5,000 residents are going to, you know, access, you know, what we access. So we know what we access. We don't know what they access. So but, you know, listening to Counsel Adams, Counsel Daniels and stuff, and yes, I know that this will be some type of a relief. Even though I don't support it, I'll reluctantly support it for, for, to get that relief. But it just, yeah, the state should have been more clear and they should have been just, I don't know, it's very misleading. And I, I said that enough, so that's all.
Counsel Catron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I, I support this as it is tonight. My question is, how much will it really cost for a mailing? Can that be Uh, my question is, um, how much will it really cost for a mailing? Can that be covered on under COVID expense? Or as a COVID expense?
Now, we can take a look at it. We'll get a cost and see what what the best avenue is to do this. So we can have that for Monday night. We have another meeting on Monday night, the May fourth. We can uh update on that at that point. If that's okay with everybody. Melissa?
Well, if if I need to mail it from May first, I I needed to put it in the mail today, kind of is is the issue, which is what I think Karen's getting to. And postage is cents. So
How much?
A thousand dollars.
Yeah. So.
Your calls.
All right. Counsel Manu? I mean, yeah, then Counsel Adams, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Counsel Adams. I I apologize, Counsel Adams. I'll get it to you in a minute. Okay, Counsel Manu?
I just want to say it's, you know, better late than never to get a mailing out. And I think it's well worth it just for for the people. And you know, we can shame the state into reimbursing us because they were lax on the um, they were misleading, I should say, misleading.
All right. I know Counsel Marketti chimed in about possibly doing a reverse call. We can take a look at that as well. It's a good idea. Counsel Adams?
Um, Mr. Chair, this may not go far, but how about, you know, I'm not making a motion to amend this at all, but I completely agree with the maybe a misinterpretation of of what is being said here to add to the motion here about uh with an understanding and based on DOR regulations, any late payment after after June thirtieth, twenty twenty, um something like will be taxes and penalties and and uh interests will be assessed um based on um initial data paid payment due, you know, or something like that. And there, just to clarify that a little bit.
But I I think it's part of the regulation, but Melissa can
I think that the specific for the vote, so I wouldn't change the language, but I certainly could include that in any notice going out to to taxpayers. So that it's
That'll work for me.
Because I I don't think that people read the minutes of this as much as they would something, you know what I'm saying? So we'll we'll definitely clarify that. Um, I don't I don't have a problem doing that, but I I think to change the um the language is usually not recommended. They give us language for a reason, and that's why I think it says on um, or it says by June thirtieth or or
On or before.
June thirtieth specifically?
Yep. I I think we have enough platforms that we use between cable access, uh possibly the reverse nine one one, Facebook Live, Facebook pages, town pages, town website. We get as many people as we possibly can with the message. And then those taxpayers that are having a struggle, most likely would call the town hall anyway and say, hey, I have an issue with my taxes. Is there any relief? We can only do the best we can. We're never ever going to satisfy everybody, but we'll do the best we can get the the message out. I mean, that's my 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 point on that. Counsel Daniel?
I'm just wondering, um, thinking out of the box, is this appropriate uh content for an EOC meeting on a Thursday?
Well, that's what I'm saying. A Facebook, uh, yeah, a Facebook Live event, we could announce it as well. We could put it up as part of the EOC as well.
Thank you.
I mean, that police site is is reaching, I don't know how many thousands of people. I know it's it's getting out to a lot of people in town, so and more people share it as well. So we'll get out. Is there anything further? Chief Norvind, if we can hear you.
Yes, the uh the reverse nine one one is an option too. I would just need somebody to write up a uh a short narrative or description of what we're trying to do. Uh, that can be brought uh to the citizens. There is about fifty nine hundred people that have signed up for um that that service through the town. Um, just a reminder that people, if they want that service, they can get that right on the town hall website. Sign up for it and it will be added to the system. But yeah, I don't see a problem with that, uh, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll work with Melissa tomorrow and we'll draft up a clear script that we can use for all those different information platforms. So we could do it on reverse nine one one, the Facebook Live, we'll put it on the website, everything. So as you say, we'll get out all those things. I just want to make sure there's one single message. So Melissa can draft it up as a script and we can just read the script, okay?
Okay, thank you. All right. Counsel Steve, do you have anything further before I take a roll call?
Um, no, that'll do it.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Secretary?
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manu?
Um, yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Agenda M twelve. Review proposal for the design and bidding services in contract with tie-in bond in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred dollars related to the South Street Water Transmission Main Improvements and Road Construction Project and take any action related to same. Any action could include table and voting on approving on, take any action. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I'll I'll review it first, but okay, we'll review it first, but go ahead. I I did something. Go ahead. Heather, can you update us on what this is?
Yep. Good evening. So um, I apologize. I know this is going to be very complex, something we would have normally vetted through a subcommittee meeting. Um, but I hope that most of you have the memo random of um that Matt put together back on March ninth. Can I get some nods? Maybe yes?
Yep.
Okay. Good. Um, because I think he did a really nice job trying to summarize what happened and what we're looking at here. Most of you are aware of the project. This is for the Main Street Transmission Main upgrades and road reconstruction project. Um
South Street, South Street.
I'm South Street. Sorry. South Street, yes. So we went out to bid. We received four bids for engineering services. Um, and these were requests for proposals where we asked them for their a proposal, their technical approach proposal, and also a cost proposal in a separate envelope. We opened all four and we uh evaluated all four. And the team was myself, the town manager and Matt DeZardin. And we scored them and then we opened their prices. So the scores, you can see, we have uh scores, it was out of ninety points, as you can see, uh thirty for each of us basically. And two of the teams, we, two of the proposals, we deemed to be basically the same. And we wanted to ask them more questions. We didn't conduct full interviews because we felt the proposals sorry, that we were provided were very clear. There were some informations that was different in them, especially when it came to the number of hours they had included for their oversight. So and construction services. So we broke apart that and we asked them to give us a little bit more information on that construction oversight, what those costs were, how many hours it was representing. And that we would go from there. So based on that, and after we evaluated how many hours were provided by both, we were able to relook at the cost. And tie-in bonds, if you look on the second page, actually comes out cheaper based on using the same number of hours and the same timeframe for oversight. We have asked them to take that part out of the contract for now. Because part of this project is to look at different feasibility for other things besides just replacing the pipe. Including, and I apologize, my cat and my dog decide they want to fight right now. Um they, this includes potentially using um in-place technologies that might minimize how much construction we actually have to do and digging up the pipe. So that might change the timeframe of how much oversight we need. It would probably actually decrease it. So instead of including the oversight right now in their contract, we're going to take that part of out of it. So there won't be any construction services. It will go right up into the bidding phase. Does that make sense to everyone? So based on our evaluation of the two firms that we had looked at going further, tie-in bond in Dewberry, we are selecting tie-in bond based on our knowledge and construction projects that we've had with them. They've been doing a lot of work with us right now in town. Um, we have a good working relationship. And they've successfully managed other very difficult projects, which this is not going to be an easy project. So we have a a good layer of comfort with them. And that, given the fact that once we project the oversight cost and construction services cost over it, they actually are a twenty thousand dollar cheaper option in the long run. So I will attempt to answer any questions. Um, I appreciate us taking this up at this time because we do want to get this project started. Um, they have been waiting patiently, but they they really want to get this project started. There's some work that they can do during this situation we're in now, um, engineering wise, to get us in better shape so that we can actually get construction plans and make some decisions going further.
Okay, hang on. Um, Counsel Steve, I'll start with you. Any questions?
I'm actually, one quick question, uh, looking at tie-in bond statement here. They mentioned that uh the budget doesn't include the cost excavate and repave potholes at various locations, and they're assuming that the town's going to do that. Um, is that your intention?
That's just for the test pitting parts.
What was that again?
That's just if we have to do any test pitting. Meaning if we dug up um during their design services, if we had to do, that's all that needs.
Okay, because it's, yeah, they're talking about here about doing the dye testing for the for the pipeline at that point, so. Um, okay.
Yeah.
It's it's for the, if they had testing on the pipeline, they're going to have to do holes, dig it up, and then we would repaint it, which would be normal.
Right, okay, okay.
Yeah. Counsel Nash? Do you have anything?
Oh, thank you. I'm I'm good with the the presentation. Uh, I may be willing to make a motion, but I'll I'll let you uh entertain questions first if you'd like.
Okay. Counsel Katron, any questions?
No, I'm all set with it as it is. Thank you.
Counsel Marketti?
I have, when I look at this, Dewberry is the low bid, so I would support it if it was Dewberry. They are the low bid. The uh cost of construction oversight and administration, I've always felt that we should have our own what you want to call a clerk of the works or or the town manager wants to call a clerk of the works slash facility manager. I think it's something that this town should invest in because we have a lot of jobs that we we need somebody to oversee. Uh, this year, they're going to be charging a hundred and fifteen dollars an hour or nine hundred and twenty dollars per day. That seems outrageous to me. I think that we could save money by having our own clerk of the works. So, I mean, I'm happy to support this. But tie-in bond is not the low bid, so I would support Dewberry as the low bid. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just need to be clear. This is a request for proposal and uh, there's, I just want to be clear on the differences here. When you have an invitation to bid, you're required to pick the lowest bidder. Request for proposal, you do a full evaluation of all the different components of what is being bid upon. And then you do all that, we all, myself and Heather and Matt, we all did that evaluation. We ranked these two to be both highly advantageous. And the price was open, it was very small differences. Heather calculated it in different ways. We found out that tie-in bond would be lower depending upon how we did that calculation. But also, to be honest with you, my, uh, Counsel Marketti, even if it was a little bit higher, uh, tie-in bond just has more specific knowledge and working with the town on these type of projects than Dewberry did. So we felt a lot more comfortable knowing that they provide quality work, uh, to go with that contractor. I don't disagree with you to some extent about a clerk of the works. You know, one of the things that I proposed in the budget was a uh manager to look at off-town buildings and stuff. Um, but there's, you couldn't hire one person to do all different types of this work. You want people that are qualified in that specific field. So like, do agree, although we didn't budget for it, and looking at town buildings and that type of construction, this would be a whole different type of clerks that'll work. So you know, it's something that we should consider, but at this time, I really think we're just better off in using one contractor to do this. Uh, but I think the overall value in this, and kudos to Heather and Matt, who went well beyond the normal on this particular project to evaluate the cost as it relates to the quality of the the proposals, because both of these companies could do this work. They're both really good. But tie-in bond, in my opinion, is the better of the two companies. And the price is very, very close. And then one calculation, it's actually lower with tie-in bond. So I I support both Heather and Matt. They're the experts in this area. I think they did a great job on it, and I'm, I support what they did.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Counsel Dana, you have any questions? You all set, Counsel Dana?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Counsel Adams?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Steve, before we go into any motion, do you have anything to follow up?
Uh, one more, one more quick question, actually. I was curious that um with projects like this, which I know this is, as I understand it, this is just the engineering for that project and the whole project itself is in the three million plus range. Um, are there any state requirements for owners, project managers for projects like this? Like there would be the school projects and stuff like that?
There, there um, sorry, Gus. There there are not. Um, the what that oversight and that construction oversight is acting on is basically a cons- uh owner's project manager. Um, it's as opposed to having one that is separate from the engineering firm because it's such a technical in in nature. Um, and what they designed, they actually it's highly recommended that you use the engineering firm that did the design because they're most uh knowledgeable of the design and what the intentions of the design were. Um, so it's not required to do that. It's not required to have them do that. It is um one of the ways, especially on highly technical projects like this, that we feel that we need it. It might be depending on what they have come back, that they don't have to be there full time. They might be able to be there part-time. Um, it really depends on what the final design of the project. I will tell you, if they are ripping out the water main and replacing it with an active hot water main that feeds the whole town right next to it, I will want continuous oversight, continuous oversight. Right now, even if we hired a clerk of the work with all the projects that we have going on, you would not get that. Um when you have an owner's project manager on like a school job, a lot of times they actually have more than one person. It's a whole staff. Because there's so so many projects going, so many different things going on in different places. Um, I am very familiar with this type of oversight work. I used to do this type of oversight work. I understand what goes into it. Um tie-in bond had done a very good job for us over on Berry Corner Road. I've been very pleased with some of the oversight. We had some issues in the in the beginning and they dealt with them. Um, so have good working relationship. The difference between the two proposals, when we evaluated them, was we weren't getting the same number of hours of oversight from Dewberry as was proposed in the proposal from tie-in bond. So we have to look at things when you're going to look at a cost basis on an apples-to-apples basis. When we put construction oversight in there, we did not give them a number of hours that we wanted them to base it on. That would be why we asked the questions and asked the question about how much, what their rates were going to be and who they were going to provide. And what the costs were going to be associated with the construction oversight, which is in when you're doing a proposal, that's what you can do. You can follow up with additional questions. Which allowed us to do that evaluation to compare apples to apples. Same number of hours. If you don't do that, you you're not comparing the same numbers. When you do that, then tie-in bond is cheaper.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I have no questions.
Oh, duh.
It's okay.
Counsel Manu? I thought I had gone around my list here. Um, so I guess the the motion would be if Counsel Nash wants to uh make this motion. Um, I think I have it worded correctly. Vote to approve the contract with tie-in bond in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred dollars related to the South Street Water Transmission Main Improvements and Road Construction Project. Does that sound correct, Counsel Nash?
Hey, that works for me. I'll move that.
You have moved that motion? Is there a second on that?
Okay.
Second by Katrona. Okay, thank you. Uh, so we have a motion by Counsel Nash, seconded by Counsel Katrona. There's no further discussion? I see none. Uh, roll call?
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Manu?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
No.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Thank you. I am thirteen. Vote to ratify the Community Development Block Grant Contract Extension from June of twenty twenty to December of twenty twenty, and authorize the town manager to sign the letter to the DHCD. Just have to make sure that we have in future that we have this ordered out. So for somebody, what is that, Department of Housing and Community Development? In required form requesting the extension. Is there a motion? Motion by Council Manna, seconded by Council Daniel. I'll go to Town Manager, Mr. Town Manager.
As you guys expected, a lot of construction work can't be done on time. We were trying to finish up construction work in the Central Street parking lot. Since construction stopped, it's actually possible. So we need the extension, I believe, from DC, from the Department of Economic Development. And I'll let CDBG Coordinator Dean give you more specific information, but I believe that's the accurate description of it.
Peg?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair, Councilors, how are you?
Long time no hear from you, Peg, welcome.
Yes, thank you so much. If I may, could I just describe the motion briefly?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay, and so as the Town Manager referenced, forgive the acronym, the Department of Housing and Community Development is the one through which we would request the extension. And because the parking lot is considered, the Phase Four, which you'd approved to go forward with, the Hamilton Alley is considered non-essential. We did go out to bid, but we had to put in within the bid language a stipulation that the work would commence only after the governor's state of emergency was lifted. Based on the obvious variables, we feel at this point that it's necessary for us to pursue the extension, should it go beyond June thirty, or should the construction have to go beyond June thirty? And because DHCD allows for these extensions by six-month increments, we're asking for the extension to go to December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Questions? I will go to Council Steve, so I'll start with you.
Nope, that seems pretty straightforward to me.
All right, Council Marquetti?
Well, this was the grant that I wanted to use on the sidewalks, and at the time, I was told that we couldn't use it on the sidewalk because of a June deadline. And it seemed to me that the June deadline was set by the grant provider, but now you're saying that the town council can change the deadline just by a vote? No?
Peg, if you could answer that, please.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. Council Marquetti, you're correct, this is the exact Phase Four that I said we would likely not be able to get an extension on. Based on the pandemic, these are, as everyone said, unprecedented times. And so the council requests the extension through DHCD. DHCD has the right to approve or not approve. They've already indicated to the town that they would approve under these circumstances.
Okay, well, although I was opposed to this, the town manager, or the town council approved it. I wouldn't want to go against what the town council wants. Town council wanted this, they voted on it, so I'll support it, even though I'm against the project to begin with. I wouldn't want to delay your grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, Peg. Peg, so you're saying because this is non-essential work, that the construction cannot take place right now? The workers can't work on it because it's a state grant, and it's not essential work? I mean, I support the extension because of the pandemic and all, I just, I just need to have a better understanding that construction ceased because of the pandemic, and that's why we're looking for the extension. Through you, Mr. Chair, may I?
Go ahead, yes, go ahead, then.
Okay, and Heather may want to speak, and the Town Manager may want to speak more clearly to this. We are in the midst of completing the Phase Two, Phase Three, as you'll talk about in the next agenda item, and that construction did not cease. The Phase Four, because we were not already within a substantial completion, and we were entering into, we felt like it was irresponsible to deem this as essential amidst the conditions. And so when we wrote the bid specs, there was extensive conversation between Town Manager, Heather, what would deem appropriate in this situation, and so that's why it was written into the bid specs that the, only under the terms that, once the governor's orders are lifted, can they go forward with construction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Heather, do you have something to add?
I just wanted to confirm that was the discussion and how it was written in the bid spec. I think it was a little bit like, we kind of left it more open in the bid spec that because of the situation, we would give flexibility and not, and give some flexibility to not have construction start until after the lifting of the emergency order. I think we could give, depending on conditions, if the state starts to lift and loosen their restrictions regarding constructions occurring, we probably could open it up, even if the whole lift wasn't over.
Okay. Council Manna, you have a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you, through you. So, I'm a little confused, and I'm not confused on the pandemic. Well, yeah, everybody's confused on everything. But what I'm confused on is, okay, so groups of more than ten, right? You can't have, so does the construction, does that consist of groups of more than ten? Are they not six feet apart? If they weren't six feet apart, wouldn't they have their masks on? I'm just a little confused on that. You know, I'm not done, just because I go, like, I have to do some traveling this week, and this weekend, and I actually saw people, you know, construction taking place with more than ten people. So I'm just like, I'm just a little confused.
Can you guys, can you guys hear me all right?
All right. All right, go ahead, Rosemary.
Okay, so Councilor Manna, I was kind of in the midst of that decision, that discussion, and the governor had just changed his, he had just clarified what he was considering to be essential construction projects. So the essential construction projects were things like roads and housing. And so the type, it had to do with the type of construction. We didn't feel that it fit in that category. And when we talked to, you know, like I said, Heather, it was Heather, Town Manager, me and Peg that were discussing this, Heather felt that there would be times that people, the workers working in this particular phase would be fairly close together, so it was a combination of those two factors.
Okay, thanks for clearing that up, Rosemary.
You're welcome.
All right, Councilor Nash, did you have anything? All set. Council Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. How much actual construction time will Phase Four take?
I guess I can, maybe I'm the best to try to answer that. Right now, we just received the bids, we haven't even finished our evaluation of them. We pretty much finished our evaluation of them, but it's, the longest lead time item is going to be some of the fencing that was required. The actual physical construction is probably going to take, if it takes a month, it's going to be a long time. Because it's basically paving a section of parking lot, putting up some dumpster enclosures, and of that nature. But the fencing, because it's an order issue, it's going to take longer period of time just because of that.
So I guess, I guess what my fear is, is December, is December thirty-first going to be enough time?
I guess that really depends on when the restrictions start getting lifted. I think the good news with this would be that because we'll be able to enter into a contract, they'll be able to order the materials, like the fencing, which could be a little bit of a longer lead time item. I'm talking one to two months. And depending on what's going on with the manufacturing of the fencing material, you know, we have a lot of what ifs here, but, you know, we'll be able to have that all ready to go for when the order is lifted, and then the contractor will have a certain period of time to get that done. If it goes on longer and longer, I would assume that Peg would probably have to go back to ask for another six-month extension, depending on the circumstances. We're really at the mercy of this epidemic right now, and this pandemic right now, of when it's going to, and what is going to happen in the future with, you know, the restrictions and what is going to be restricted. So I'm still hopeful that maybe sometime this summer, those things will open up, and that we'll be able to complete this without a problem this fall.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Council Katrona, did I skip you, or are you all set?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Council Adams?
Just a quick question, you may have mentioned, who's the contractor right now? You guys opened the bids the other day.
We opened the bids, the low contractor was precise paving.
Okay, thank you.
Anything for Council Steve, I see his phone is dying. Anything for the Council Steve?
At the moment, no, my phone is still alive, but I'm paying attention to it closely, so.
All right, thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Item fourteen, vote to ratify Nunes, Nunes, Phase Two Contract Change Order Number Two, Change Order Number Three, and Balance Change Order, increasing the contract by seven thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twelve cents from its original contract amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents to two hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-two cents. Do I have a motion?
I'm all set.
Second. Okay, Council Manna moved it, Council Daniel seconded it. Mr. Town Manager?
I'm going to have this one go directly to CDBG Coordinator for explanation, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Peg, are you taking this one? Peg? Anyone?
Wait, can you hear me? Okay, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, okay, good. All right, so may I give a quick brief on the items?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I just want to thank you again for your time this evening. If you will just glance your handouts, on page three, you had an item from GCG that outlined the change order one, two, three, the balancing change orders, and then the bottom line net increase for change order two and three. I just, I think that this is a helpful, quick snapshot of where we are. Phase Two, as I just mentioned, is ninety-nine percent complete. We're eager to close out this contract. Simultaneously, we're completing the bulk of the Phase Three in the coming two weeks, which will come to Town Council with the closeout for that contract, for any changes on that contract on five eighteen, at which time, we're anticipating savings from the planting schedule in the Phase Three contract to total eleven thousand dollars. Again, a savings of eleven thousand dollars on the Phase Three. So at this time, there were infield changes that were approved by the DPW and GCGR engineers to happen and relate to Change Order Two and Change Order Three that will cause an increase on this contract. But again, the net decrease to the, to the Phase Three contract will allow for a net decrease overall of approximately three thousand dollars. And so the change orders that were requested, when they were removing the raised building, excuse me, the change order quantity changes that happened, that negative four hundred two dollars and twenty-five cents represents the items that are in that box, that GCG, page three, GCG handout. The box shows all of the changes that happened in the field. Quantity changes were, there was remains from the raised building at three-ten Main that they needed to remove that were within the town bounds. Back in the day, boundaries were obviously somehow, you know, broached, and so we had to demolish some of that. Then there was also the decrease in the mulch and the tree protection. All those savings are the quantity changes. Then the actual change orders that happened in the field, Change Order Two, Change Order Three, represent the seven thousand dollar one is the seven thousand dollars plus the bond increase for that seven thousand dollar change order. That represents, when they were coming up against Fidel's Building, they found that the curb, existing curb was sitting on top of the existing sidewalk. And so when they went to demolish, they had to do some, they had to remove some of the concrete curbing, and then build a new short wall to be able to reinforce that building's foundation in order for us to proceed. And then for the Change Order Three, there was some electrical work that, on the stage, that wasn't up to grade, it was to the previous grade, not the new grade. And so four out of five were at the correct grade. The fifth one, they had to find a quick fix, most affordable correction, which they did while they were out in the field, which represents the seven hundred dollars. Again, it's six hundred and change for a riser that they had to purchase for the conduit, plus the bond. And all in all, all told, the change order represents an increase to the change, to the contract, excuse me, the Phase Two contract of the seven thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And then we look forward to coming to you in two weeks with a deduction for an overall saving.
Council Steve has a question to Peg. He states, maybe I misread the plans, but I thought the area near Fidel's was supposed to be mostly grass and trees and not concrete. Either you or Heather.
If I may, through the demolition phase, while they were, while they, if I may read, the contractor found the concrete short wall curb abutting the building was poured on top of the existing concrete walk. To remove the existing concrete walkway, they would need to destroy the concrete curb short wall and expose their field stone foundation, therefore protect that foundation by building a new wall. The, that will all be a sidewalk, and then there will be these, you know, the beautiful intricate custom granite curbing shaped planter boxes, or planter spaces, will be filled with plants and trees. And so I'm not sure where on the plans he's referring, but that was intended to be sidewalk with these, with the concrete, the granite-shaped planter spaces.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll go around, any questions, Council Manna?
I'm all set, sorry, my mouse wasn't on my.
Thank you. Council Nash?
No, thank you very much, I appreciate the clarity provided by Peg, as always.
Thank you. Council Katrona?
Thank you all set.
Council Marquetti?
Yeah, I don't know how much longer this town council is going to put up with this Central Street boondoggle, but this cuckoo councilor is voting no on this cuckoo project. Thank you.
Council Adams?
To Peg, real quick, when do you guys start planning again?
They're going to be onsite Wednesday with the trees donated by Opium Land Trust, and the plantings will be coming in this week also. And site furnishings, we're waiting for the delivery, it's either going to be at the end of this week or next week, we're very excited.
Thank you, Peg, looks good.
Thank you. Council Daniel?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. I will go, see no other questions, nothing from Council Steve, I see any, I don't believe I missed anything. Roll call, please.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
No.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve? He's a yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. I do have, this is a placeholder, old business status is section six dash two hundred, keeping up Pet's bylaw. We can just, we're going to keep a hold on that until we have a meeting where we can have public access. It's not a high priority at this point, and I'd rather have a ability to have public input, if any, not that we get a tremendous amount on the. It's not a high priority at this point, and I'd rather have a ability to have public uh input, if any, not that we get a tremendous amount on those bylaws. But I just, in good faith, want to keep that as a placeholder. Now moves to Counsel's Forum. I'll start with Council Manna. Council Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I don't really have anything. I just want to say thank you to our first responders and all our. All our healthcare workers, our grocery shop, um, where we're keeping the grocery stores active and 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 up and running. And, you know, even the small, um, the smaller stores, um, the gas stations, everyone out there who's who's risking. Um, thank you, um, Counsel Jovan for putting up with me. I know sometimes I can um. I can come across as being um demanding, and I apologize for that, but um I think um we're doing the best job we can. Um, thank you, Counsel Adams, for all you're doing, and um, yeah, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. You as well. Uh, Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thanks everyone for their uh candor and for their concern, as always, with the. Progress we're trying to make in the town while addressing the the current circumstances. Appreciate everything, of course. Uh, I'll just make a note that uh as Counsel Steves had asked at the DPW Subcommittee Meeting. Um, we will look to address issues that are brought forth by the counselors or by the general public. I have made note of a couple of which, um, Counsel Marquetti and Counsel Steves have brought lens and benefit. If that hasn't been addressed by the director, uh, we'll look to either bring it to committee, or I'll take a drive down there next time I. Have a needed trip to the grocery store, uh, ask for attention then. We still have sidewalks to discuss a couple of issues in particular. Um, I'll also go back to what I was talking about uh early on when I did my Subcommittee Report. That uh evidently the current circumstance regarding wipes and foreign debris in the sewer system wasn't for clogged pump today, but. In fact, clogged sewer lines, but I'll I'll continue to stand on the notion that people need to be responsible with what they're flushing down the toilets. So um, not going to go much more on that soapbox tonight. Appreciate uh. Uh, people hearing me out, and I hope everybody has a good safe week. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Nash. Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, just a quick note, I am in favor of um Subcommittee Meetings being held remotely. I think it's important that we vet things out. Um, secondly, uh, it's 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 pretty disheartening and and frustrating that after seven weeks, we can't have public participation. In these meetings. We can't get the volume out to the public correct. I'm not too sure what and how to fix that, but I think it's something that needs to be addressed immediately. Public participation, and especially as we go through the budget, is is very important, as everyone knows. And um i- it's it's really getting frustrating now to see that we're so many weeks into this and we just can't get it right. Um, I also want to thank um, I want to thank the Town Manager and several other department heads, um, Heather, Andy, Eric. If I forget anybody, Mike, for addressing the the residents' concerns, citizens' concerns, taxpayers up on Dresser Hill Road. Um, we took a tour of that area and um some concerns were raised and are being addressed by. Um, by the by the town. Uh, and I want to assure all the residents on Dresser Hill Road that uh this is not only being looked into, but um. There, the town is holding back the certificate of occupancy until these these um. These things are addressed uh that are going on up there. So, other than that, thank you. Stay safe.
Thank you. Counsel Marquetti?
Uh, yeah, um, I I had a couple uh last week about the election. I just wondered if there was a an update on the election. Apparently, the state is going to allow mail-ins this year, and I was wondering if it was something that we were considering. And second of all, I just I just would uh like to send out my condolences to the families of those who have passed because of the COVID vi- uh virus. And I hope everybody in town stays safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll follow up with uh Matty on the elections thing. Like I said, gee, we did have some conversation about that. I'll follow up for you on that. Um, whether I can get an answer for you. Um, Counsel Adams?
He was chair through you. Um, I did talk to the town clerk today. Um, she just wanted to remind everybody that they they can call or email. Early ballot applications. Um, they will be provided via um mail, or they they will hand them outside the door, those ballot applications. Um, they're going to be due back by state law no later than June eighth for those applications. But that doesn't guarantee that your actual ballot will be, will show up on time. So she wanted to let the public know, um, if you want to do early ballot uh voting. Email her. She can send uh send you um the application via email. Her email address is M. Bonadies, B-O-N-A-D-I-E-S. At SouthBridgeMass.org, or call her at five zero eight seven six four fifty four zero eight. She does recommend that if you receive an application, you turn it in by June fourth. Don't wait until June eighth. And lastly, I wanted to thank uh the town inspector, all those working under him. Uh, Town Manager, the employees that are working now, the EOC, the first responders, and all those individuals. Uh, that are participating in in helping out the communities, um, being vocal advocates for those that are less uh during this pandemic. Um, the constant support that we're, we are receiving, the first responders are receiving, and those people are just trying their best to live through this. Uh, I just want to say thank you. Um, and my condolences out to all the families that have been affected by this pandemic, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Steves, did you have anything? I don't. Think he has nothing tonight. Counselor, I don't think I missed any councils, correct? Okay. Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'd just like to say that I'm gratified that we're not going to forget our veterans in the in the month of May. Uh, with everything that's going on, uh, it seems like sometimes you just decide to make it cut and lash and postpone everything and cancel everything. And the fact that we're going to take some time to recognize the veterans and 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 their service to our town and to our country. Uh, gratifies me. So I'm just want to say that I'm pleased to hear that that's still in the works and still going on. Uh, that's all I have tonight. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Town Council was scheduled for Monday, May fourth, twenty twenty at seven PM. And that's scheduled to be a remote meeting.
Thank you. Agitation of motion to return.
So much.
Council Manna moved it. Counsel Adams seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Counsel Steves is a yes.
Okay, thank you, and have a good evening.
And I can thank all the staff that attended the meeting as well.